Okay, thank you everybody. We'll get started with the next panel. About a year and a half ago, Yana asked me for ideas of panels and what would be the dream panel if I could help shape that. And I think what we have here is exactly what I had hoped for. It's a real honor to have the leadership of various space commands from our partnering nations be with us to talk about how it's going today. So with that, I'd like to start. We are stronger together. That is an axiom that is foundational for this conference series. And how we strengthen those partnerships is a topic that is woven throughout all of the panels today. PSSI is a leader in space security policy, in the words of Roger Robinson this morning, "for those who share our values and our brand of space cooperation." And PSSI is unique, in my knowledge, in that while there's many organizations that are focused on the noble goal of advancing norms of behavior, such as limiting debris and how close satellites should get together, it's true that rules are good ideas for those who follow them. And I think General Mike Trout framed his question earlier this morning when he said that he hopes for the best but prepares for the worst. So PSSI has embraced this view and recognizes that access to space may be compromised by the deliberate actions of others, and consequently, we must recognize and confront those risks today. So three years ago, we could not have had this panel. The space commands didn't exist, and I think it's a testament today that our governments have recognized the risk, something that PSSI has been researching and analyzing since its inception. And so now today, we can have this conference. But despite the seniority of the panelists today, their organizations are still in their infancy. We're still developing the missions, the tools and capabilities that they have, and certainly the relationships, how they work together. And they are not simply occupying positions today, but they are truly charting where we're headed in the future. And so I hope that today, we will hear about how they're doing, what their challenges are, and what we can expect as a vision for the future for strengthening partnerships in the space commands today. So today, I'm going to start on my right with General Michel Friedling from the French Space Command. Sorry. So, sir.
Not yet, but I'm available in 11 days. So if you need me. So thank you very much for this invitation, sir. It's a pleasure to be here, three years after the, if you understand well, the last edition of the PSSI. It's always very good to exchange views and to contribute to enhance space security and sustainability altogether. And it's interesting to see that there are competitors here. I mean, industries, you are competing, but you are working together, and we are working together to make space safer and sustainable. The French Space Command was created the 3rd of September 2019, and the US Space Command was created three days before the 31st of August 2019. And so when we met, General Raymond and me, because at the time, he was the head of the Space Command, when we met Mrs. Parly two months later, which was at this time, the Minister of Armed Forces, we were sitting, we said that, and she said, "So you are twins." And General Raymond touched his head, and he said, "I don't think so." So, three-years-old baby space command. We are in charge not only of space operations, but also organizing training and equipment, which is very specific in the French Ministry of Defense. And because we are so few of us, that we decided to put altogether the space policy, including space capabilities, innovation, cooperation, and space laws, space legal issues, plus operations, and then training and exercises. So you are all very much aware of the space context, and I don't, I won't make my speech about this, but just one figure. Last year, we put altogether, put on orbit around 1,800 satellites. We are almost end of June, so half of the year, and we have put during this first month, 1,100 satellites on orbit. So by the end of the year, I guess we will have put more than 2,000, probably 2,500 satellites on orbit. So it's a real question. And this rapid evolution of the context poses some great questions about risks, threats. So the previous panels said a lot about the risks and threats, how to address them, and a good description by Pascal Legay of the threats seen from ISA, and we share this view. So I won't extend on this. Again, the good points about the Ukrainian lessons learned, opinion, or lessons learned in the previous panel, so I won't extend on that. I intended to do that, but I won't. So I will go to the point, cooperation, what for? I would say that space is a global theater seen from a military perspective, and it's not like other theaters on land, sea, air domains. It's like cyber, so it's a global theater. So we have to be able to act in common with other partners and to conduct combined space operations in this global domain. And what are the reasons, the other reasons apart from that? I would say that first, we have to increase transparency in outer space. Second, we have to improve our resilience. Third, we have to bridge capability gaps, and cooperation may help to do that. And fourth, we have to shape the environment, and again, cooperation helps to do that. Just a few details about these four points. I don't want to paraphrase General Raymond again, but General Raymond says, "Space is hard." I say, "Space is gray." This is my punchline, "Space is gray." And if I would paraphrase Klosvitz, "Space is foggy," you know? Because we don't see exactly what's going on in space. It's very difficult to see what's going on in space. So first of all, we should make space transparent, because it will be then much more easier to name and shame, to characterize. Improve our resilience, because most of us, we have a very relatively limited number of national space assets, and they are fragile still today. So we must extend, we must improve resilience through architectures and through cooperation. Third, bridge capability gaps. Of course, pooling and sharing capabilities is a way to enhance and bridge these gaps. But maybe from the US, we don't own all the necessary space capabilities to conduct military operations on ground, air, and sea. And then shape the environment. This is a strong message delivered from a multinational perspective when you cooperate in space, from military perspective, addressed to your competitors. Cooperation serves the collective interest and shape the environment by promoting norms, by coordinating our positions, and by developing common concepts and doctrines. So what are the challenges, in my opinion? There are a few challenges. First, economic competition. We are competing. National industries are competing. They try to have customers, they try to make money, so this is a challenge. Second, I would say information sharing is the major point in my experience over the last three years. We all want to cooperate, but we have so much difficulty in sharing information. And third point, space is very high. The space domain is evolving very high, very rapidly, and we have to run to be in or we are out very quick. And the private sector is running faster than the governments and institutions and even the Space Forces, Space Commands. So if we don't want to have norms, I heard this point in the previous panel, saying that norms should be more acceptable if the private sector is trying to define them. Well, I can understand that, but the thing is that we don't have to let private sector define the norms and all that kind of things. So we have to run fast, and this is not very easy in the government sector. So these will be my main items to start with, and I will maybe in the questions and answers say how we cooperate or try to cooperate with all our partners in bilateral or military frameworks. Thanks.
Thank you, General Friedling. The next is General Mike Trout from the German Space Command.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here at this distinguished panel and talk to you all. Michel, you mentioned the dates of the foundation of the US Space Command and the French Space Command, and I know that the British, UK Space Command is even older. So my Space Command was founded only last year, on the 13th of July. So I'm still in the baby status, where others are already toddlers. So you can judge by yourself how we behave, actually. But still, so Germany finally made it as well and found the opportunity to found a joint space command within the organization of the German Air Force. So we are not that large that we can found or operate a whole space force. So it's only a small command and growing. Thank you for having the opportunity to be the second speaker, because if everybody else would have spoken before me, so I shouldn't have anything left on my paper over here, but I will try to highlight some points on allied space command cooperation, which seem to be very important for me. First of all, I would depict a little bit what the German Space Command is all about. We've been talking about space domain awareness today. So the good news is that in Germany, space domain awareness has not started last year in July. We have already been operating a space situational awareness center in a very good cooperation with our German civilian space agency. And this is a role model for other good cooperations between civilian and military organizations in our country, because we've been running that for more than 10 years already, with a very, very intense and close cooperation and with a two-headed structure. So there is a military commander, a military boss of our space situational awareness, and a civilian, and they operate and decide in consensus. A very interesting construction, which was very successful so far. So it's actually an example of how cooperation, the whole thing of cooperation, could work. Secondly, we are of course in the buildup process to create capabilities to prepare and conduct space operations. It's a very broad, very broad expression, a very broad thinking, because it's not only operating satellites. Space operations include to us everything in securing space systems, space products, space information throughout all dimensions, land, sea, air, space, and of course, which is of predominant importance, cyberspace. So our third topic, which we run in close cooperation with our German cyber and information service, because they are the largest customers of space-based services, and this may apply to every other country as well. So they do navigation, they do imagery, they do communications, so that's all vested in our cyber and information service. So we try to find out together the best way to support all kinds of military operations from space and through space. And last but least, of course, our fourth topic to work on in German Space Command is how do we operate military satellites in times of tension or even war? So preparing for the worst, well, normally, it's sourced out to contractors, but well, there may be a situation where we need to take that over into our own attention. So that's more or less how German Space Command has been working for the long time of less than one year already right now. Cooperation for us is crucial, is absolutely crucial, since we are a small partner, since we are perfectly aware that space domain, and you all know about the physical qualities of space domain, is global, is of global importance, and the single nations perhaps expect, except only one, can do that alone. And we can't do that alone, so we need to cooperate at governmental level, at military level, at of course, commercial level. That's my number-one statement on that, and I would like to suggest perhaps some ideas. Michel was already talking about some challenges, and we face the same challenges, of course, as being partners in several coalitions and of course, in NATO. And I would come back to NATO a little bit, because I grew up as an air defense officer in NATO's integrated air defense system. So I've done that for a couple of years, and for me, it was completely normal to sit in an operation center to exchange classified data between different operation centers, to have common procedures, to have interoperable systems, and to have information sharing between all of us, working for the same purpose, making NATO's airspace safe and secure. And this is, to my mind, it could be a role model to extend that into our space domain as well, because we face a common threat. That's what we do in space right now. We heard about that this morning. We are in a defensive posture, like we've always been in NATO air defense as well, and we need to be swift, reactive, and flexible. So these were cornerstones of founding NATO's air defense. And as you perhaps know, NATO was doing a long process integrating missile defense into air defense as well. That took 10 to 15 years to do that. And as we mentioned today, we don't have that time for space. But perhaps NATO's air defense could be a role model, a blueprint actually, for development of interoperability in our space domain cooperation as well. That does not necessarily mean that we limit that to NATO members. That does not necessarily mean that all NATO members need to be inside that coalition of the willing, as you may say, from the outset. So that would be my first idea to offer. We can discuss that later on in Q and A. Secondly, we face, of course, those challenges. General Friedling was talking about the question and the difficulties of data exchange. Yes, there is one big opportunity and one big capacity we already have, and that rests on our commercial partners. Commercial partners normally exchange unclassified data. And those unclassified data, we call it the black data, are interchangeable, very easily. You don't need big provisions of security and all that stuff. Our challenge is actually to share classified data. And what we were able to overcome in NATO's air defense, that we have a NATO secret or NATO confidential classification, we have common data protocols, and that went on, and it worked pretty well. In the space domain, we unfortunately have 50 different shades of red. So 50 different, almost 50 different classifications, releasable to those, releasable to that, nationalized only, you name it. And that's exponentially increasing by the number of participants. And this is our big problem. We need to overcome that in the coming future. And that's something, yeah, you may shake your head, that's one of, I only want to quote that challenge. So my challenge is to overcome 50 shades of red. So perhaps we can drill that number down a little bit. Comes to my last point, levels of cooperation. Well, not only military space commands should cooperate, we should include several levels. So first of all, we all see that in our countries, there's a big ecosystem of very innovative potential, very innovative companies, commercial actors are emerging. So that's already known and was discussed this morning. We need to integrate our commercial partners. And I think every space command at this panel over here has foreseen a commercial integration cell or commercial integration unit, where we can have exchange or where we can even have liaison personnel between our military and commercial partners. And at my very last point, we should extend our cooperation, not only in operational way, but in the strategic way, to drill that really big hole and trying to extend a rules-based order into the space domain. That's what was already discussed, and I really personally appreciate the initiative in the United Nations to start that discussion, what responsible behavior in space actually means, and I hope we can all contribute to bring that a little bit further on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, General. I couldn't help but to think if in the US, if we could reduce the number of our classified programs to 50, we would have a huge improvement in our problem that we're dealing with. Okay, the next speaker is Commander Mark Flewen, who is the head of operations plans and training for UK Space Command.
Distinguished delegates, mums, ladies and gentlemen, it's a real honor to be here with you this morning alongside my international partners in looking at this fundamental question of allied space command cooperation, which for me certainly is the cornerstone of everything we're trying to do as we collectively look to make space safe, secure, and sustainable for all. It's also a real privilege to be with you today, given where we, the UK, are on our space command journey. The command only stood up in April last year. We've been moving at pace throughout that year to declare initial operating capability, which we declared in April this year. And as I look back and reflect on that year of activity, I can't help but think that if it weren't for collaboration, if it weren't for being integrated by design, that we wouldn't have been able to deliver what we have thus far. And I'm hugely grateful to the partnerships that are on this table today for that. I also think, and we've already touched on it today in the conference, that it's a timely inflection point for us all, particularly in the operational context, what's going on in the near abroad. And when you look at what space-derived data, products, imagery are providing to senior decision-makers whilst also tackling disinformation, that of course, is all based on international cooperation, on our partnership and collaboration across the defense space enterprise as we move forward. Before I go on though, I do think it's worth reflecting on the fact that collaboration and cooperation aren't new. Indeed, this year is the 50th anniversary of the Apollo 16 moon landing, and I was privileged enough last month to listen to General Charlie Duke, who was the lunar module pilot of the Apollo 16 landing. And whilst his stories of landing that module were as captivating as they were mesmerizing, particularly for a pilot, I couldn't help but reflect on the fact that 90%, the vast majority of his message to the audience and those gathered and listening to him was about collaboration, it was about cooperation. It was about the team of teams that worked around that endeavor to ensure that we delivered space human spaceflight then in 1972 and continue to deliver space human flight now very much today. And in many ways, what we have today, the way we collaborate internationally is absolutely fundamental to securing the future of the domain, how we work together in partnership, how we work together between the space commands, how we deliver on many of the challenges that we've already touched on today. And that's why we place so much value on the strategic partnerships. That's why the space commands across the nations you see in front of you are working so closely, hand in glove, but also that's why we're working so closely with our civil space partners. Where certainly from my perspective, I've seen a huge convergence in the way defense and civil space work together, even over the last year, and particularly as we face the challenges in Ukraine. As I thought about speaking today, I thought about allied space command cooperation through three prisms. Firstly, was SDA. I think we've discussed and had a really rich conversation around SDA, the criticality of SDA, also how cooperation is going to be fundamental to unpicking that as we go after a common cross-orbital domain, common operating picture between defense and civil space. Secondly, it's already been alluded to by the colleagues on this table, is really going after international norms and behaviors. We're hugely appreciative of the work that's going on through the UN Open-Ended Working Group, and we applaud that, and I know you'll hear more on that this afternoon. But if we don't stop debris-creating events and we don't really go after this, then the challenge is going to be more and more difficult for us all. And thirdly, and my final point really, is the fundamental importance of being international by design in all we do. That's not just in the way the space commands operate together, but that's also the way we design capability, we share data, but also how we educate, nurture, and train the next generation of space professionals, which is going to be absolutely critical to us all in the room. Pleasingly, I do think we are getting after this. The space command enterprises are working extremely close together, and we continue to evolve. I see defense and civil space converging at a rate I certainly haven't seen before. And I think we're reminded of that daily in the strategic difference that space-derived data and product is delivering to us today. I'll conclude there. I'm really looking forward to the Q and A after this, and that concludes my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Final panelist is General John Shaw from the US Space Command.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Stoffer, and it's also wonderful to be here today. And thanks to Roger and Yana for your leadership in this forum. It's terrific and good, and it's just wonderful to be a part of it. Thank you. Yeah, so just like Mike said earlier, when you go last, all the good stuff's been said. So maybe what I'll do is I'll just spend a couple minutes with some observations that I have that might be informative to us, and you may or may not agree with them. Mike can be part of our Q and A. So first of all, yeah, all of our organizations are new. That's an opportunity for us to work together and shape them in ways that we can learn from one another and grow together. There isn't a single template that everybody's looking to. We're working this together. Another observation is Michel and Mike and Mark and I, we actually know each other pretty well. It turns out, since our respective space security organizations and our militaries are relatively small, we tend to know the leadership and all of that, and that's an advantage. So we can work together very quickly, and we know each other personally. It's an advantage for us. We look forward to expanding that. I thought that this might be, I was going to throw this out as maybe this is the strategic problem we're actually talking about at this conference. And I'll start by way of analogy. The maritime domain had centuries, centuries to develop a framework that incorporated commercial, security, diplomatic, and scientific exploration activities into a framework, centuries. And it's still not perfect. There's still piracy. There are still violations of those norms. There's still unprofessional behavior. But we have a framework that I think largely works for the planet. From a space perspective, we've had less than 60 years to try to develop a similar framework, and I think what were many of the discussions we're having here today are our realization of these different sectors of our space activities are being thrust together, and we're trying to find a framework that works for all of them, for economic, for security, for diplomatic, and for exploration. So that might be what we're wrestling with. How do we do that at the speed at which our activities in this domain are racing ahead? I think Mike Trout had some of the wisest words yet here today when he spoke earlier about a commander's, military commander's pessimism. If you didn't catch it right about when he said it, is when we heard the loud peals of thunder, as if the heavens themselves were affirming the wisdom of that perspective. And so for the next minute and a half, bear with me as I become very pessimistic for a moment, because I'm an optimist at heart, but we just need to recognize a few things. Here's three things for you that we need to have a reality check on. Here's, here's three things for you that we need to have a reality check on. And first, as Scott Pace actually said it terrifically at the end of the last panel, so I'm just going to bear on it very briefly. No matter how well we work on norms of responsible behavior and some sort of legal framework within the space domain, there will be actors that violate it. It happens in all the other domains. And I need to point out that our years and years of work on law-aborn conflict and international humanitarian law are not exactly being adhered to, to the east of us right now, today. Second, there will be future collisions in space. They will happen. Unintentional, intentional, they will happen. And third, there will be deaths in space. The question is, will we have done everything we possibly can to minimize those eventualities, those inevitabilities? And will we have constructed a framework that contributes to that kind of outcome? So pardon me for being a little pessimistic there. My last observation, I just want to go back to the, it was mentioned at the first panel talked about this pretty well, the security value of commercial space. So again, let me point to a little bit of history in the maritime domain. Were commercial ventures ever truly invulnerable to security threats in the maritime domain? Never. Now, there were norms in place that tried to protect them and lots of other constructs over, throughout history, but they were never completely invulnerable. That will not happen in space. The value, the security value of commercial space has at least two aspects to it. The first is the explicit value that those commercial services bring to security matters. And some of those were identified in the first panel. The second, and one that we've observed more recently, is there's an implicit value in commercial space for the broader information environment. So I'm surprised it actually wasn't said yet today, but I just wanted to point out that we've seen in the Ukraine conflict between commercial ISR and commercial communications, particularly thinking Starlink, but not, not limited to that. Those commercial activities have been contributory to a broader information environment that's provided some transparency that Russia would otherwise not have there in existence. If you put those together, the explicit, implicit value of commercial space into a security environment, I think we see the vectors ahead for us in how we work together. So I look forward to this panel, look forward to the rest of this conference, and look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, General Shaw. I'm going to start off, first of all, by saying it, it sounds like their messages are all very much aligned. So I'm going to do my best to try to poke holes in and see if there's any differences that we can get some insight into. So I'd like to start with a question to each of you, just to maybe get a little insight from your personal challenges here. And I'm going to start with you, General Trout, and we'll go this way, so I don't always pick on the first, the same time. So tell me, what keeps you up at night? What is your biggest concern?
Besides my two-and-a-half-year-old daughter, it's a bad feeling of lack of information, actually. So the worst things we, the worst things are out there, the worst tracks. And it's again a parallel to my history in NATO's air defense. The worst track is the track you can't see. And this applies exactly to our domain as well. Do we have, of course, there's a fog of war in the space domain as well, operationally, tactically, physically. But I have the strong feeling that we do not know enough to act properly. And this is really keeping me up, because we need to solve that problem at first, so that we can take proper military decisions, which could includes force. And I want to take a military decision, of course, as we all are trained to take military decisions in insecure situations, but not having all information. But right now, I feel that our information basis should be much better.
Yes, to General Shaw's first point of three, I think that people will break norms and behaviors. For me, it's the exponential increase in the ferrous activity we're seeing on orbit. And I think that then points to the things we need to go after, whether it's SDA, because if we can't see, assess, track, and attribute at pace, at the speed of relevance, as was alluded to earlier, then we won't be able to act. And when you see what our adversaries are doing, how they are increasing their capability, both terrestrial and on orbit, how China exceeded the US last year in terms of the number of US, a number of launches and payloads deployed on orbit, that is alarming, where we need to collectively work together. But I think that absolutely points to the importance of our military relationships. It absolutely points to the importance of civil and defense space working hand in glove. And I know we'll come to it this afternoon, but it absolutely points to the point of space deterrence and getting that right as we continue to evolve.
I think I'm jockeying with somebody else for the mic here. Hey, first of all, first, John, I actually sleep pretty well. And I've got the objective data on my phone for my sleep scores to prove that. But, but I appreciate the question. Before I fall asleep, I'm usually thinking about a couple things. And the first is, we don't want to let the terrestrial warfighter down. There is so much reliance today on space among the joint and the combined force that I worry that somehow we'll let them down. One of the scenarios I tend to think about the most is missile warning. There'll be some sudden event, and space will not have been there at the time and accuracy needed to provide warning. I think we do a pretty good job of that across the combined force, but that's one thing I'm concerned about. We can't not do that. Can't let them down. The second, and a little more abstractly and strategically, is at what point does our reliance on our space capabilities and our combined forces and their accompanying vulnerabilities become a strategic instability that might actually encourage an adversary to start a conflict? We have to close off those vulnerabilities so that space is not part of a broader strategic stability problem.
Thank you. I sleep very well at night, too. Thank you. But I would say that, to answer your question, that first, I think we, we don't go fast enough. We have to run faster, definitely. Whatever the perspective you have is regarding China, Russia, regarding the evolution of the private sector, regarding, you know, the, these norms being established in a kind of way by, by the private sector without even the agreement or the, you know, the approval of the governments, we have to go faster. Second, a kind, a kind of, I don't know if the word is the proper one, but a kind of disalignment between our strong will to cooperate, because there is no doubt we want to do this. And we try to do this. We have many occasions to do this. We have the ceasefire, we have bilateral discussions between our space organizations, and we try to work on all, every single items about information sharing, data policy, and so on and so on, training, exercises. But, but there is a disalignment in a way between this strong will and the real world. Because in the real world, you know, as I mentioned in my introduction, you have this industry competition. And when you try to develop capabilities, you have, each country has its own industry behind, you know, a space organization. And it's very difficult then to go from, you know, a will to cooperate, then to common capabilities, because this is a reality. And because of bureaucracy, I would say that all of us, we are startups in big organizations, big companies. The space command, the French space command is a startup in a big company. The big company is the Minister of Defense. And it has its own process, committees, and it's slow. And it doesn't work this way, so in the real world. So, so we would like to overrun, you know, this bureaucracy in terms of data policy, information sharing, going faster in developing architectures and command, and so on and so on. But in, but it doesn't work this way, unfortunately. So these are the things I would say about your, what's, what could be, what could keep me up at nights. Thank you.
I'm beginning to think I need a job in the military so I can sleep better, because I'm, I don't sleep well. Okay, the next question, and we'll start with you, Commodore. In the US, the warfighter is really responsible for identifying requirements for the future. So you all have an incredible job today, getting organized and figuring out the new missions, et cetera. But you also have a role in, in shaping the future for the people who follow you. So can you give some insight into the things that, that you feel are priorities that, that your successors will need, that, that you are kind of laying the foundation for the future capabilities?
I think that one of the key things from a UK perspective is the unique structure that we formed around the command. So we, for the first time in, in UK, certainly, we put operation, the responsibility of operations, plans, capability development, and capability delivery under a single two-star. That means that we can really react quickly to the requirement setting, really react quickly to the demands of the warfighter, something that defense writ large, and it's not just the UK have really struggled with, is being agile. You will all know that space-based technology is moving at pace, not only from a defense perspective, but also civil space perspective. And it's trying to harness that technology, harness that pace with agility, so that we can actually react very quickly. We are absolutely embedded with the other more traditional domains, including, including cyber, in terms of cyber and space as the fourth and fifth domain, because there are a huge number of synergies that we can draw on as we continue to develop and evolve. And I think from my perspective and the UK perspective, if we get that right, if we get those foundations set, if we're able to move with that agility and flex money to deliver on capability development quickly, then we will have set strong foundations for our successors. Thank you.
Thanks. This could be an entire day just by itself, to my requirements. I'll just say there's two macro areas, and you've heard them both already. So just some commentary that US Space Command is looking at. First, of course, is space domain awareness. The first panel talked about this. It's worth pointing out that we really only started using the term space domain awareness about three and a half years ago. It used to be space situation awareness, at least in, in how we were approaching it from, from the US, at the time, Air Force Space Command, and now US Space Command perspective. The difference is the, the realization that we can't just rely on the wonderful gifts that Kepler and Newton have given us on the propagation of orbits to know where objects are going to be two days, two weeks, two months from now. In fact, the very objects we're probably most interested in are least likely to be where we predict them to be in those particular time periods. So, so space domain awareness is really a much more comprehensive approach to understanding potential threats, understanding in near real-time basis where they're going and sharing that. Second macro area is interoperability. And I think you heard some of that from the first panel as well. It does no good if we develop our own kind of systems, but we can't share it with our allies, we can't share it with commercial, we can't share it even with scientific community to some extent, if there are those kinds of data that are available to them that can be of use. And so making sure, and of course, to the terrestrial forces that need to know what is going on in space and how it might be impacting them. So I would just say those are two very large areas that we're working at, at least from a US space command perspective, to make sure that the services, it's not just Space Force, the lion's share of capability will come to US Space Command from the US Space Force, but we want to put a demand signal on the other services as well, across the joint force and working with our allies on a common set of requirements.
Yes, a few things. Well, some might know that I'm leaving my present current occupation, job, position in the next day. So what I'm saying to my successor is, we, you have to maintain agility. So I want to be monomaniac, saying this again, but I think this is paramount to succeed. We have to maintain innovation mindset, innovation mindset. Not only innovation in technology, but innovation in organization process, how we do things, how we talk to others. You know, I had an inspection by Inspection Corps in, in the Ministry of Defense. They produced a report saying that I did nothing like in the books, by the books. So I said, okay, but if I had done this by the books, we had done nothing. So, so we have to be very innovative, even in the way we do business. One of his priorities should be to gain expertise again and again, not only technical expertise, but operational expertise. I would advise him, I did advise him to establish and maintain very, establish very rapidly and maintain personal relationship with all the space commanders and force commanders around the table and all the others, because this is, again, like General Shaw said, very, very important. And the other thing is explain and explain and explain again, because the other services, space is something very far for them. They, they don't, they don't understand. You know, the, the, the big chiefs, some of them, not most of them, but some of them, space is expensive and fragile. So space is not expensive. Space in France is less than 5% of the budget of the defense. So it's not expensive. It's a priority of the Minister of Defense, but it's not expensive. You put, you should put, we should put some more money about in space. And it's not fragile, it is fragile. So we work on defending and protecting our space assets. But this is all the things that we should care about for the next years to come.
And there's not much left for me to say. Well, of course, I can sign everything my, my predecessors mentioned. So we need to stay our, keep our mindset as a startup. We need to not grow, not go too much into bureaucracy. Germany is very well famous for bureaucracy. So I try to keep out of that and try to move forward very quickly and acquire our capabilities during the next, next years. Something I may add to all the good points the other panel members have done is we need to generate expertise, you mentioned that, Michelle, and we need to generate a future generation of a workforce of space enthusiasts and space experts. So these guys and girls are going now to high school, and I want them to be in my space command in five years' time after having done a master in space engineering, not aerospace engineering, but space engineering. And I need, I not only need engineers, I need strategists, analysts, intelligence people with expertise in space. And that's a big challenge for me, and that's something I would like to develop pretty much. Thanks.
Okay, I think I'll at least try one more question. We'll see how much time we have left. Russia and Ukraine. For those of us who work in the space industry, there's not a lot of surprises. But it really is refreshing to see the commercial contributions to everything from RF collection to imagery, to comms and all of that. So if, I'm hoping this is a question that you can answer. Is, is there any surprises from each of your perspectives as you watch what's happening and how the systems are being used? Or are there any lessons learned that, that we're now drawing that, that will be helpful in the future? So, John, I'll start with you.
Yeah, just to keep it quick, I'll just go back to what I said at the beginning, the, kind of the obvious value of commercial space in transparency. And to elaborate a little bit more, I think you understand what I mean by commercial ISR. All of us saw on, on various news networks, commercial imagery that was happening pretty quick. This wasn't like two-week-old imagery. This was two-hour-old imagery, or maybe even less, showing convoys on roads or showing evidence of, of atrocities. It contributed to a transparency. And the, I think, I think the Starlink terminal might be an icon of how information can be shared beyond the control of an authoritarian regime worldwide. It can contribute to transparency and to a, a, a broader understanding of what is going on in our, on our globe. Those are just two exemplars that actually surprised me, how quickly we're able to see that happen and sort of made us realize the benefit of space that transcends just the security value of it.
Well, somebody said in a previous panel that it was not the first space Well, somebody said in a previous panel that it was not the first space war. Well, I could agree with this, but I mean, this war is showing very evidently that every conflict on Earth, or on Earth, I would say, whatever it's land, air, or sea, will start first in cyber and space. And actually, it did. It started the day before the beginning of the operations in space with this cyber attack on ViaSat. And if you go a little bit back in the past few months before that, you have to take into account this very strong strategic messaging of Russia with the ASAT test in November, which is, and you know, when you know the Russian mentality and doctrine, you know that this was linked to what was going to happen. This is a strong message, saying we are ready to fight in space. Because we know that space gives you a strategic superiority, and we are ready to lose our own assets by using such weapons, because this will deny you the use of space capabilities. And this will establish a kind of symmetry beneficial for us. So this is very strong. And again, the private sector is, I would say, the kind of new thing in this war, and how we use them, how we use them or counter them, because also, it's difficult to control them. You can use them, or you can be bothered by what they send on the pictures, on the TV screens all over the world. And I would say, space capabilities provided by the private sector also had a tremendous role in the information warfare. All these images from the fighters in the tunnels of the Mariupol facility, you know, these kind of heroes resisting to the Russians, they were brought on the screens by the Starlinks, actually, terminals and the space capabilities. So this is to be mentioned, I think.
Let me just quote a very famous space entrepreneur. "If I die under mysterious circumstances, it has been nice knowing you." Elon Musk, on the 9th of May this year. This shows clearly how this last conflict shows the links between commercial and military and governmental space. So these borders, boundaries do not exist anymore.
Thanks. Noting I'm keeping you from lunch now, I'll just make four quick points, four quick words. Willingness, transparency, as General Shaw alluded to, contribution, and the disinformation campaign. From my perspective, it's been phenomenal to watch what civil space have offered to this. And I think that loops all the way back to why we formed commercial integration cells within our space operations centers, so that defense and civil space can work hand in glove, and we can really evolve together. Thank you.
I'm going to take one question. Roger, do you have anything?
I do, at the risk of postponing lunch a little more. But I think Scott Pace's musings at the end of his panel discussion were among the most important statements made thus far. He talked very candidly about the adversaries and what the problem is. It's not the problems of the folks in the room. It's China and Russia, put simply. And he also made the obvious point that when you're, if you sustain a counter-space attack, your first instinct isn't to respond in kind. Obviously, the debris issues and too many others to name make cross-domain responses, you know, a good way to go. And I think we would agree that we need to be innovative, as General Friedling has mentioned, about the nature of our responses. Now, I admit I have a bias on the economic and financial side of that equation. And that's what PSSI has tended to concentrate on. And I would submit that the two things that China and Russia care about most are access to money and technology. Now, on the money side, and this is not going to be a lecture, but just a factor two, that in the last five years, $3 to $5 trillion, with a T, have been moved from approximately 160 million American retail investors in our capital markets into the coffers of the Chinese Communist Party, in the form of 5,200 Chinese companies that are in our markets. Now, that's a lot of money. And the other thing that they care about, which is Kevin O'Donnell's category, is the entity list at Commerce and the fact that we could deny them high-end technology that's critical. Well, you certainly get their attention in these two areas. As you can imagine, thinking about capital markets and even the entity list has not necessarily been the stock and trade of space commands of the alliance. And indeed, most of the military, in my experience, have basically come up with a line, "It's not my lane." You know, it's somebody else's job, whether it be the Ministry of Finance or Treasury of the United States, or something along those lines. Now, I'd be very encouraged to hear that that's not the case, and that you are looking for penalties and deterrence in the economic and financial domain. I'm just curious if that is the case, or whether we're not quite there yet. But acknowledging that the, you know, these are the areas where the adversary is most vulnerable. I mean, both of them, Russia, China, have non-convertible currencies. I needn't tell you the utter dominance of the United States, and for example, the global financial domain alone, where we hold 66% of the world's liquidity. So that's a discussion for another time. But I did want to just raise the question, to what extent, when you're looking at responses to something serious that starts to go wrong in space, whether it's a counter-space attack itself, or some other forms of malevolent behavior, whether or not you're actively considering the cross-domain responses in these categories where China and Russia are absolutely seized with concern. So that's my question. And it didn't take a long time. It's just a matter of whether there's something there in the current thinking. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm going to try to answer. I would say that at international level, we discussed this in this wonderful exercise named "Shreaver War Game." Shreaver War Game is a political and military exercise. And we, in my opinion, we never limited ourselves to military options in response to an aggression against space capabilities of the alliance or of private companies partnering with the alliance. So this is the first point. The second point is definitely in France, we try to do that. But again, we are at the infancy of all this. And when something happens in space, I immediately report, not only to the SHOD, the Chief of the Joint Staff, but also to the Cabinet of the Minister of Defense, to the Cabinet of the Prime Minister, and to the Cabinet of the French President. So you can see that it's, the answer will be, or should be, or could be, cross-domain or cross-departments. It could be diplomacy. It could be whatever. And actually, it did happen, for example, for the ASAT, Russian ASAT test. The answer was not a military answer. It was a diplomatic message sent and coordinated by the nations. We all exchanged about that, how we handled this ASAT test from Russia. So we discussed the options, and then we, it's not only military options.
Yeah, I'd echo that. I think what you allude to is a fused, multi-domain, all-levers approach. And I can absolutely reassure you, that's certainly what we aspire to from a UK perspective, working closely with MOD, working closely with FCDO. I think the example that's just given from a space perspective is a really good one, i.e. a kinetic event, debris-creating event in space, but that involved all levels of government, from the grand strategic down, in terms of considering, how best do we deal with that, and how best do we respond. And indeed, the way that the strategic messaging was sent out and the way it was coordinated across the international community, I think is a great example of how that fused approach is absolutely what we aspire to, particularly within space. Thank you.
Hey, Roger, the quick answer is yes, at least from a US perspective. And I'll just say, we work closely with OSD Space Policy, which participates in the interagency and is bringing all those possible possibilities to the table. I do want to hit on something that kind of full circle to my integrated framework point at the beginning. And so it's the, it's kind of the converse of your question. I believe that the Department of Defense and US Space Command has a responsibility to encourage economic investment in the space domain, in the same way we see that in the maritime domain. United States Navy, United States Coast Guard, they're there to provide security, transparency, to encourage investment and confidence. And I think it was, I think it was Jill Stewart that was talking about that on an earlier panel. I think that responsibility is there. It has to be part of a broader framework that where security and economics work together.
Yeah. Lastly, for Germany, it's always going to be a political decision. It's always going to be a mandate. It's always going to be a governmental and parliamentary decision to react on a case like that, like all the other nations reacted to that Russian ASAT test in November. Germany reacted on a political messaging level as well. So that will be always a coalition reacting. It will always a political reaction, which includes diplomatic, informational, military, and economic means, as you are well aware of. But my point I would like to make in addition to that, we shouldn't only ask ourselves how we do react, but how we prevent such events at its best, deterrence by denial. So if we show somebody else that it doesn't matter, and it's not worth the effort attacking us, that might be the best one. But still, I'm preparing for the worst, as you know. Thanks.
With that, we're out of time. I have an announcement to make. But before that, I'd like to thank the panelists and reiterate that it is really an honor to share a stage with all of you, and a privilege to see how you're working together. And I'm kind of excited to see what the future holds for this new journey we're all on. So thank you all.[1792.23][1792.23][applause][1793.23]